Good evening, everyone. I call this board meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you for joining us this evening. Please be advised in the event of a fire, emergency, and alarm sound, please note all emergency exits and evacuate well away from the building. At this time, we request everyone, please turn your cell phones to silent. Thank you for your cooperation. Additions, deletions, and changes to the agenda, Mr. Melisani?
Yes, under four seven, we have a few extra CSE recommendations for the board. Also, under new business, eight, four, who emerged team, and under ten, one personnel, we have a school to work students to be working in the IT. That's it.
Thank you. Can I have a motion for the consent agenda, one through seven, please?
I'll make it.
And a second?
My second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That motion carried. Correspondence, Mr. Melisani?
Yeah, I just had one piece, so in your board packet, I shared with you the state comptroller's fiscal determination. Each year, the school, the state comptroller examines our financial position and was referred to as a fiscal stress monitoring system. As expected, Calum did outstanding. That's off to Jeremy and the board for overseeing that. We had no designation, which is the highest designation you can receive. So, we received that designation for several years in a row. It's nice job. Other than that, we're going to, no, Mr. Ballack posed a question regarding solar, or excuse me, pilots, and we're going to speak to that actually during our presentation. We get the pilots to answer the question regarding the cesspady. So, we'll get to that answer.
Sure. Thank you. And we have some points of pride from the last couple of weeks. We have had many visitors to our classrooms. AP Psychology hosted Dr. Abby Monroe, our school psychologist. Virtual Enterprise welcomed Anne Marie Shepherd from ABS Consulting and Kayla Heineman from K's Farm Stand. CTE six had a visit from Larry Tettimore, who is a photographer.
The Adolphine 101 Series focused on civil service jobs in our lunch and learn welcomed Paige Engard, who is the Communication and Technology Director at Genesee Country Village and Museum.
Special thanks to Jesse Howell from Magic House, Magic House here, excuse me, who graciously donated her time to share yoga enrichment class with our middle schoolers. Thank you.
Junior Lily Clement and the middle high school art teacher, Mrs. McCartell, were honored at the 2024 Shared Spaces Expedition and Arts Center Gallery at Nazareth College. Shared Spaces and the annual Rochester area high school art teacher and student show designed to celebrate the unique apprenticeship process that occurs between a teacher and a student.
Our varsity wrestling team was also honored as the 2023-2024 recipient of the Earl Fuller Frank Moroa Sportsmanship Award. The prestigious award is given by the Wrestling Officials Association of Section Five for demonstrating good sportsmanship at all levels, modified JV and varsity. We are beyond proud of them, Coach Day, and our wrestlers and coaches who have represented our school and community. Our number five seeded varsity girls basketball team defeated number 12 Mount Morris 59-18 at home in Section Five C2 pre-quarterfinal. The Raiders improved to 15-7 on the season and traveled to number four Alexander on Friday night for a big quarterfinal matchup with the Trojans.
In addition to that, last night, our girls played Dundee, first place, first seeded team, and had a hard fought game right to the very end and represented our school community very, very well. So, very proud of our girls' basketball program.
We also had eight members of the varsity indoor track and field team compete in the 2024 Section Five Championships at Nazareth College. We are excited to share that there were five Raiders notch, notch top six finishes in Class A five to ribbon.
Congratulations to our varsity cheerleaders who finished their season with a third place finish in Class D two at the 2024 Section Five Cheerleading Championships at Gates Chi-Lai High School. Congratulations to Coach Carson, who was named the Section Five Class D two Cheerleading Coach of the Year as well, deserving honor for our devoted coach.
And finally, congratulations to Senior G McCowen, who is featured on Livingston County News Hot Corner Feature.
Excellent. And now, we have our guests of the board. Who? And we'll do the brainstormers first.
So, I'd like to have this both come up, share with us the good news that are high school brainstormers, how they performed recently, and what about the team?
We received a first place trophy this year. We had eight members from last year come back and join the team, and we had 10 new members come this year. So, we have 12, 18 kids on the team. We had four competitions during the regular season. I can play eight kids per competition, and every time, we had more than eight kids come and participate. We beat Livonia in the semifinals. We had 11 kids that night, and then we beat Geneseo, which has been our nemesis and brainstormers for the last couple of years. We beat them this year to win first place, and I'm proud to say all 11 kids that came, each one had at least one opportunity to play and participate.
Can you tell us about what play looks like for brainstormers for?
So, it's kind of like academic challenge bowl. So, it's trivia. So, we can play four kids per round, so it's four and four, and they have a moderator that reads the questions and then a judge that says yes, no. So, they read the questions. We have a buzzer system, so it's almost like four-person Jeopardy. You ring in, if they recognize you, you answer, your team get the points. If you don't answer correctly, the other team has a chance to steal, and you kind of go back and forth that way. And then, after, I think it's five minutes of play, then the next round of four come in and they compete again. And we do that four times during the regular season, and then the top four teams from there compete in the semifinals and the finals, and then it's the same thing back and forth. So, it's really fun, very fast-paced, really fun. It's very exciting to watch and be in. Right? Ryan?
Want to introduce the team, the members that are here? Everybody else, can we call?
So, we have Izzy Cochran, Taya Roll, Julia Wasilko, Ryan Murdock, Joseph Curtis, Chloe Kurtz, Max Paray, and Attila Valoxi.
Good job, guys. I didn't mean to put you on the spot, but could you just give us one example of one question? Just one?
Make it more. Sure, yeah, sure. Give an example. One of the ones I answered last game was, where does the dish paella originate from?
The dish what, dear?
So, you don't even know the word.
Paella?
Okay.
South America.
Spain, close. Yeah.
That was your question, and you paused it, and you knew it, and good for you.
Categories can do history, geography, anything you think of could be a category, like pop culture, math, science, it's anything. It's really like Jeopardy, and they're mostly very random. They don't say, we're going to do our history questions now. It's just random, you buzz in.
That's, that's cool.
This is a, so I participated in this. I think I'm smart. It was very humbling. We never come close to first place, so that's terrific. Congratulations.
Congratulations, everyone. So proud of you. Would you like to thank the president, Mr. Victor? And we'll put in the case tomorrow. Sorry. Congratulations to everyone, you're so proud of you. You're welcome to stick around, but I know you're also had busy lives. If you want to leave, we will not be offended, but you're welcome to stick around if you sort of desire.
I'm sure you're a top 10. You got to stick around.
Raising smart kids.
Okay, next up, we'll be Dr. Chanel in our top 10. Thank you, Miss Paul.
We have some members of our top 10 with us tonight, so I'm going to actually start by introducing you all to this year's subuditorian, Miss Isabella Cochran. Izzy, would you just stand up and share with the board a little bit about, honestly, I like the top 10 to share all the other things you do because I think it's pretty remarkable. So, now they know you do brainstormers, but tell them a little bit about what your activities are like here at Caledonia Mumpert, and then what you're planning to do after graduation.
All right, so I play three sports, volleyball, basketball, and softball. I'm involved in Spanish club, I'm actually the secretary, involved in ski club, brainstormers, obviously. I am actually the leader of prom committee this year, and my plans for next year are, I'm going to be attending Northwestern University to major in biology on the pre-med track and maybe minor in Spanish.
Northwestern in Illinois?
Yes.
Good for you.
Thank you.
That's impressive.
You just completed your seal of byleracy as well, did you not? Yeah.
So, that's how you knew where paella was from?
Okay, I am going to try to go in order if I can. So, number four, ladies and gentlemen, Miss Madeline Brogan. Madeline, would you please stand up and share with the board a little bit about yourself and the things you do here at school, and then plans for post-school?
So, I'm Maddie, obviously, and, I mean, I did some clubs last year, but this year, I was kind of more focused on just my grades. I also got the seal of byleracy and work, and I plan on going to either Fisher or Niagara University for nursing school.
Number five, ladies and gentlemen, Miss Samantha Johnson. Sam, you get the drill line now.
So, here I am in National Honor Society. I'm actually the secretary. I'm also the treasurer in tech club, and I am a manager of an ice cream shop, so I'm a physiologist at a school as well. In the future, I want to go to Robert S. Westling for our teacher.
For our meditation.
She's also been someone whose name you all have said quite frequently around her artwork and the many pieces that she ends up exhibiting. So, she's also representing us constantly in that arena. Next up, ladies and gentlemen, number six, Mr. Donald Pete. Donnie, your turn.
I'm Donnie Pete. I was also a part of the crew that got their seal of byleracy this year. I'm a part of the varsity soccer team, basketball team, and baseball team, and in school, I'm a part of the math team, and I'm a member in the Spanish club. And after high school, I plan on attending Biggerton University to study pharmaceutical sciences.
That's it for this evening. I will pound the rest of them until I.
And you guys can leave also. No reason to stick around unless you really want to.
I mean, Donnie, you said you wanted to stay, didn't you?
I heard somebody threatened you that it would be like till eight o'clock.
Yeah.
Congratulations, everyone.
Thank you. Good work. Thank you.
Mrs. Vuce, anybody sign up for public forum? We have no old business. Number one, under new business, is a, the second budget presentation by Mr. Melisani.
Mr. Nardon also will assist me with this presentation. So, tonight is actually our second full meeting regarding the budget development, even though we've been talking about this since November, and we're going to hit on the instructional code, which is the largest part of your budget.
We lost all the top 10 students to fix that for you.
And certainly was working. There it is. Thank you. So, tonight, again, the instructional code's 2000, which is, you know, a big, large, roughly 7% of your budget, the proposition, which will be your budget and the bus, and then tomorrow, actually on Friday, Mr. Nardon will submit the tax cap, which we have finalized, which you'll see here later in the presentation. So, what we have remaining is our meeting, one meeting in March 19th, and either April 9th or 22nd. 22nd is the latest you can adopt your budget. Our hope is that we will have it finalized by April 9th, allowing enough time to provide the information to our printers and get the information to our public. However, if we need to wait until 22nd, that would be the case. Public hearing on the 14th of the budget that we will be submitting to our community for support, as well as the 21st is our, the actual vote. So, under public hearing, we also have meet the candidates for any of our potential board members.
So, with the instructional, as Mr. Melisani said, instructional is roughly, I think, 73.81% of our budget, rough so far, roughly, hey, it could be off a couple of tenths of a percent. So, when he said 73.8%, you look at that number, that's not 73.8%. There's a reason for that. There's instructional codes that are outside of the instructional function. For example, benefits that's categorized in the 9,000 function code, some of those benefits for teachers are going to be classified as instruction. So, if anybody had that question, that's, that's why you don't see that as 7% of your budget. So, instruction covers everything that we do here. So, it's education for elementary K all the way through 12. It covers social workers, it covers psychologists, it covers your special education codes, it covers your school resource officer. Everything is in that instructional code. Right now, we have it estimated going up 7% from just over 10.8 million to about 11.6 million. And that's, and 761,884 is the increase as of now. So, just to give a little breakdown, again, the 11,644,761,000 dollar increase, these are the reasons for it. So, CTE, Career Technical Education, it's on a three-year rolling average, that is going up about 53,000. The reason it's such a drastic increase is because COVID is just coming off of that three-year average. So, now we're getting back to realistic numbers, and we're hitting the roughly about 35 to 40 kids, that is about our average. Salary increases, contractual increases for our teachers, about $177,000. Increases in OC, Special Education placements, those go up anywhere from four to eight percent per year that we've seen this year. That's increasing roughly $70,000. Technology increases, this covers your hardware and mostly your software. Usually, we see that about a 4% increase per year that equates to about $30,000. Private school tuition increase. So, this is, this is big. These are all the kids that attend private curriculum schools outside of our district, Mary Carriola School of Holy Childhood, and American School for the Deaf. So, we have some students that are high-cost students, and that is why you see a large increase in this budget. Increase in school resource officer, so adding that second one that we did last year, at the end of last year, early this year, $78,000. And then, this does include all the administrative budget priorities, that was roughly $77,500 that was presented to you last meeting.
Do we have any expected breakage in salaries?
We do. We have a couple of retirements, and we would expect that we would be paying replacements.
That's in here.
It is already, thank you.
So, this just gives a breakdown of every single function code in our total budget as of now. Again, these numbers are constantly changing. I've probably changed these numbers since I put this presentation together. Again, it's going to change minor, but we're always updating this as, as we see fit. So, general support, those are your 1,000 function codes, about an 8% increase. Instruction, get that 7% increase there. Transportation, it covers all our drivers at 4.19. Community services, again, that went from more of a position to a stipend, so that's why you see the big decrease there as a percentage. Employee benefits, health insurance came in a lot better than anticipated this year, 9.5% on the high deductible plan, and 4% to 6% on the Blue Point and the copay plans, as you can see. Debt service, again, there's a big drop-off in debt service. You're going to see that in Building Aid when we get to the revenue side of our budget, so don't be excited that you're going to see $400,000 increase. We lost roughly 84% of that on the revenue side. And then, the appropriated plan balance, this just prevents the district from over-expending the budget. So, I don't want anybody to get nervous like we're inflating the budget $100,000. We are inflating the number of the budget $100,000, but we also have that line item on the revenue side, so it's not like we're taxing for that dollar amount. It's just to prevent overspending because we could have a kid, high-cost kid that moves into the district in May after the budget's put together, that's $100,000. So, we just don't know, and that's why we have that in there.
With respect to transportation, as I shared in the last meeting, we do expect to purchase one of our school bus, diesel engine bus, roughly $180,000. We think it's going to be closer to 160,000, but we will provide flexibility so that we can have all the, I guess, not bells and whistles, but whatever requirement may be for mirrors, as well as camera systems and so forth. And then, Capitol Island project, our intent is to do the work in the basement over here at Middle High School for asbestos removal, as well as extend the sidewalk that connects the middle and high school, elementary, middle and high school, going towards the front parking lot, is to finish that off. It's will be $100,000.
So, here's our updated tax gap that I will be submitting probably tomorrow. So, last meeting, I presented a tax gap to you, it did change because I was looking at the pilot agreements for the solar in particular. So, there were two solars that I thought might have been added to our pilot agreements as of 24-25, Horseshoe and Caledonia CSG. Come to find out, Horseshoe is not ready, so they won't go on the books until 25-26. So, what happened is I back off that pilot amount, that lowers that bottom number for pilots, pilots coming from prior year, and because that's a subtraction, it actually increases your levy, or increases, I'm sorry, your tax gap, which allows you to increase your levy. So, 2.65 is where we stand now. Now, I know last meeting, a board member asked a question about the pilots. So, if you take a normal house, and let's just use a house, and you say the assessed value is 200,000, and it becomes a pilot, you're going to lose that assessed value on the house, which means everybody's going to pay a little bit more because the assessed value is going to go down, which means usually your tax rate goes up. However, with a, with a solar pilot, the only thing that is on the assessment rolls before that pilot exists is the land. Land does not count towards a solar pilot, so the land is completely exempt from that pilot. So, the only object that's a pilot is the solar, so nothing's coming off the books. In fact, that land actually loses its agricultural exemption. So, because it loses an exemption, exemptions are passed on to the other taxpayers, it's actually going to decrease the tax rate. So, in essence, the tax rate should go down if everything stayed equal, and the district should receive another, I believe it's $7,900 in pilot revenue for the upcoming school year.
But the difference of that would be if it was actually taxed as the business at its true value, it might actually be higher in tax revenue.
Yes, if it was not a pilot and it was a business and it was.
But at least we're not losing.
Hundred percent. You're not losing anything from.
We're just not getting all that it might be otherwise.
So, as of six months ago, and I'm glad you just recently looked into this, my understanding was that the state hadn't given guidance on how to assess solar projects.
Okay.
And also that from farm side, it was our understanding that it would still be ag-exempt, which I had a problem with, so I'm glad that they said it is not.
This is coming from Mr. Bill Bacon over at the county, who's the director of environmental economical development. He told me that the agricultural exemption will come off of that pilot.
As it should.
Yep.
Good.
So, it's actually a win-win for the district.
Any questions regarding the tax gap? So, next is, you know, we'll actually start sharing some revenues. I go to Albany this weekend, Saturday, or Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, to advocate to receive more money, more funding for schools. We meet with the four parties, that being our Sunday Woman Burns, Senator Helming, and we also meet with the educational chair and, oh gosh, Shadi Mayor, who's the head of one of the branches there. So, we meet the four top people that have influence in the budget development, and hopefully we will come back with some better information. Our goal is to be at least to where the governor, the November run, aid run, would be, that would put Calum in right around $200,000 in foundation aid. Currently, we're at $130,000, so that's at least our goal. Also, one of our other goals is to make sure that we're able to create a special education reserve so that when you do have high-cost students that move into your district after the board, the community's approved a budget, is that, you know, that that doesn't come out of the current year budget, and you don't have to do spending freezes, so and have decreased opportunities for students, that you could go to this reserve and put stipulations in place, and Senator Helming's in support of that as well, and so hopefully that will be passed through this budget development process. As I shared with you before, I'm not optimistic, and maybe I'll hear different. This weekend, that we'll have an on-time budget as April 1st, but that is our hope. As you know, in our board guidelines in terms of budget development, we talked about that we're going to use the executive budget proposal from the government. So, that's 130,000. This year, knowing our gap, we may have to estimate that to be closer to $200,000 where we think we will end. So, we may have to modify that guideline just so that we would have a balanced budget as we move forward. So, in the coming meetings, we'll talk about revenue sources, and then look at our, our decision-making criteria, we have to then look at cuts as we move forward to have a budget that our community can be proud of and support. Any questions regarding budgets?
I have a question regarding the private school tuition increase of 275,000 and change.
Yep.
How many students is that number impacting? Or how many stu, how many students, is it one student, is it two, is it three? Was it a new move-in?
Yep, so the big increase is due to a new move-in.
Okay.
And then, not a new move-in, but a different placement in schools. There is five.
So, one is a change in placement?
Yep.
Okay.
Out of state, that happened last year, and now we're realizing.
Yep, it's coming on.
That maintenance charges is 56.8% required by the district.
Okay.
Which is coming about $150,000 increase. And then, the other children that amounts to those other four, it's their increases in their services.
So, then there's, so it's five total students?
Five total students, yep.
One change of placement and one, and four increase of services?
Four increases, yep.
Okay, thank you. I'm glad to hear that, Bob. I don't know if that's been talked about before, where there.
Oh, I've brought it several times as superintendent.
Because I can't tell you how many times we've said at this board, and, and just worry, that is a concern, it can really break our budget, one person moving into district or one change of placement.
So, the proposal that we put forward is very similar to the teacher's retirement system, which allows you to use up to 2%.
2% prior year salaries.
Right, or salaries, and no greater than a total of 10%. So, we use the same terminology.
Okay.
In that reserve as we put it forward. So, right now, there, there's support on both aisles. It doesn't really cost the, the government any money to establish that there is just hesitant to create another reserves because there's a perception out there that we're just overtaxing money from our taxpayers and placing it in, in these reserves. There's that assumption, which is not the case.
Are you optimistic?
I've been optimistic for a couple of years, so even when Senator Gallagher is a representative, he's brought this forward, but we would, we would not have somebody on the other aisle. We do now. We have actually four people that are supporting this, so I hope that that's going to be the case. It's one of those things, all right, what are they, what are they going to give up to get it? You know, so it's got to be negotiations back and forth. I hope that that's the case. I do foresee it's going to be the case within a few years if it doesn't happen this year because this is at least an eight-year discussion, and we've been working on this.
Well, and you, you think about 275,000, that's five students. That's not a lot. Like, what if we had 10 students that, or eight students that needed a change of placement? We could be easily into half a million dollars and change a budget. It's, it's.
Oh, without question.
So. It's overdue.
We, we had one inside $770,000 plus five, six years ago.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
All right, and review of the 23-24 Reserve Fund Balance Plan.
So, as Mr. Nardon pulls that up, so every year, we are required to have our reserve plan on the website and so forth, and we reviewed it last year, and it's just time that we do it again this year, so take it away, Mr. Nardon.
Now, it's a 23-24, it's, it's one of those funny things, right? You can't update, this is really the 22-23 reserve plan, but you can't update until 23-24, so you can say either or. I'm going to call it 22-23 on our website, but again, you can, you can say any or, I know districts that do both. So, what this is, the state comptroller, when they come out and do their audits, they want to see that the board has approved a fund balance and reserve plan for the district, pretty much so you know what is in our reserves, what is in our fund balance. We're not trying to hide it. When you look at the ST3, which is the annual statement that I have to submit, a lot of numbers get buried in there, and people think that if I put that on the website, I'm trying to be sneaky. There's nothing sneaky about it. Our reserves are out there for people to see, there's no secret. Again, we talked about one or two kids or five kids, could be 300, 400,000 dollars. So, with this plan, it details every single reserve and fund balance, which is a savings account that the district has. So, I'll just go through a couple, for example. So, unassigned fund balance is your first one. Think of this as your rainy day money in your savings account that allows you to pay bills when you do not receive state aid or taxes. So, really what this is for is to pay bills over the summer. I still have support staff that work over the summer, I still have administration that works over the summer, and I still have to pay my bills over the summer. And a lot of times, those purchases that you make at the end of June, you don't pay until July or August. So, if I don't have cash flow to pay those bills, I have to go borrow, and then I'm going to pay interest on that borrowing, it costs the district more money. So, the comptroller allows you to keep 4% of next year's budget. So, because these are numbers as of 6/30/23, you take the 2023-24 budget, multiply it by .04, and that gives you the total amount you could have in your unassigned fund balance, which is your savings account. This reserve plan talks about how the money gets into that reserve or that fund balance, how it can be used, how it can be spent. So, with that, let's scroll down a little bit to one of my favorite reserves, which is the capital reserve. of my favorite reserves, which is the capital reserve. My eyes are terrible.
Right there.
Capital reserve, 2022. Another reason why this plan is important is if you don't know what age your reserves are, or you don't know the funding levels, you could run risk of overfunding your reserve. When I got to this district, I had to rely heavily on Mr. Melissani because the capital reserve that was in place, I didn't know when it was passed. I didn't know what the amount it was for. So this reserve plan will detail for any superintendent, any business administrator that comes into the district, yes, this was created in 2022. The creation was created on May 17th via board approval, how much we can fund the reserve up to, and then what we can use that money on. So what we do is we take a snapshot of what we put in the voter authorization for that reserve, and then we kind of just put it into this language so that people know what this money can be spent on. So this money can be spent on equipment, apparatus, any kind of capital improvement project that the district does. So this reserve plan is great. I love it. I love having it. It is posted on our website. I try to update it every year in October. I am a little late this year, but I'm happy that you guys are looking at it now. And that's pretty much it in a nutshell. So I'll answer any questions if you have any. Otherwise, this will be posted to our website tomorrow.
Do you know what the total of all the reserves are roughly?
I want to say six to seven million, but that will include the capital reserve, which we are expending 2.7 of that in the upcoming capital project, but I will get you an exact number. I know liquid reserves is about three to four million, and then with everything else, I want to say probably close to seven, maybe getting closer to eight. But I can add it up.
With these ones, are you allowed to invest?
Yep. Yep. So we have a treasury out there right now in our capital reserve, because we technically don't have to move that money over to the capital fund and pay for project expenses until the end of this year. So that's sitting in a, I think I did an eight-month treasury at 5.3%, so that interest investment earnings of $150,000 is going to roll into the capital reserve for the next project. So I try to invest the reserve money, but more importantly, I try to invest our operating cash. The reason I want to invest our operating cash more than our reserve money is that operating cash can go to make better improvements for the school, so I can use that money on anything. I can use that money to cover a budget gap. I can use that money to purchase something for our ball fields. If I gain money and interest in a reserve, it can only be used on that specific reserve, so the hubular reserve for employee retirement outfits. We don't have that many in our contracts to use that reserve, so I don't want to gain any interest. I'd rather invest our operating cash, and then if I overinvest here, I'll borrow from the reserve to pay our bills.
Can the interest earned in a capital in a reserve account, does that count towards...
The funding level?
The funding level?
No, so specifically that is why...
So you accidentally overfund?
Yes, so when we passed our capital reserve proposition back in 2022, we set up to 10 million plus interest earnings. If I didn't put that plus interest earnings, yes, it would count.
Is that in all, is that in the language of all the reserves?
Really, it only matters in the capital reserve has a funding level. Everything else is set by the board. The superintendent, myself, will look at it and give you those funding limits. But for example, our ERS reserve, there's no maximum funding level limit.
Is that even a percentage of something?
No. We say it's five years of our ERS expense. That's what I have in our plan, but I can make that 55 years of our ERS expenses.
You just have to keep the plan updated.
Yes. I update it. I look at different funding levels, and I also look at, so I increased it from four to five years. It's not because I'm trying to hoard money in the ERS reserve. That is one of the most liquid reserves that I can pull money from in case I need it to pay for something, because I have about 200,000 of expense every year, so I can pull that money to cover my ERS bill. Therefore, I might not have to raise taxes in that year.
Jeremy, I don't expect you to know this, but I'm curious to what the answer is. So if you don't know an estimate, just email me. But what, when you invest the operating cash, say 2023, how much do you think you got in interest?
In the 2223 year, I made about $198,000. I was mad because I missed 200 grand.
That's amazing. Good for you.
So when interest rates are high, it makes us look good. It's, I don't want to take total credit, Christine, in my office. It absolutely helps me. I know we bounce ideas off Mr. Melissani too. But when interest rates are high, we know our cash flow. We've been doing it now for a few years, so I know when my state aid is coming. I know how much my payrolls are, how much my comp payrolls are. It gets easier over time.
Right, especially as you get to know the nuances and the flows of cash throughout the year.
We just did a $1.5 million investment. I know I got 400,000 coming at the end of February, so we can cover that for a week.
Thank you for that.
As we anticipate, it's going to be the rest of this school year. Anyways, the interest rates are going to be between that five to six percent, as we know it, right?
Yeah, they're dropping a little bit, so they're high fours to the mid 5.3 right now, depending on the length of the treasury investment. I anticipate those staying like that till about June, and then I anticipate them going to about 3% to 4% the second half of the year. That's still going to be great interest earnings, but that is why we're not looking to increase our interest revenue budget, although we might have it for the short term. If I increase my budget to that 190,000, what happens in two years when the rates go back down, and then I'm going to lose that money, and then I got to lower the budget? You're going to have big fluctuations.
Yep.
So I'd rather just pocket that money, put it in a reserve, or use it for a one-time expense.
Right, which you have the luxury of doing when you're getting interest on operating, but not necessarily the interest on...
And we don't pull from our reserves at all. I just have that there in case. And again, if I run out of cash, you'll be looking for a new business administrator anyway. Mr. Melissani will make sure of that. So I make sure I always got cash to cover our payrolls. We talk, we make sure we know what's going on before we invest the money.
Can you invest the $8 million you were talking about a few minutes ago? So what's stopping you from investing the entire $8 million and taking 5%?
That's about 400,000. Yep. So that 190 was just in the operating. I'll have to add up. If you want the total interest number, I can definitely...
That number's perfect. That helps me understand what range we're in. That's more than I would have thought.
Yeah.
But every year, we should...
Every year, we do invest. The thing is, you've got to have enough for the payroll, so it's a whole lot of timing. It's about eight months, because we know we're going to have the state aid coming at that point.
That's something, it sounds like it's the longer Jeremy's here and understands the nuances of our district and the cash flow, the better at it you can be.
And working together a cash flow for future people to be successful too. So we had 2 million in our account the other day, and again, that's because of the time we get cash flow coming in. Now, I know in the next month, I have two payrolls. It's going to be roughly a million dollars, and I'm going to make up a dollar amount. My account's payable, and I'm going to have about 250. So I feel comfortable in investing 750,000, because I know I, you know, I'm going to have that much.
You can cover your expenses.
And then I invest even more, because I look at the state aid reports, I see we're going to get a half a million dollars at the end of February. So I'm like, okay, we can handle that. It's knowing your cash flow and setting it up the first year is very tough because you just don't know. Every district's a little different, and every year is a little different. This year, we're actually getting state aid in November, December, January. I've never gotten that here before. Usually, you get a big payment in October, and then you don't get a big payment again until March. So it all fluctuates year to year. Any other questions on the reserve plan? Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeremy.
Mr. Bigford, is you done? Close to filling the shoes of your former college roommate?
No.
Still have some work, Jeremy.
Patrick Wood had 250. He has 198 years. I was writing about Patrick Wood had 250.
I whipped that up.
All right, second week out of college.
All right. New business number three, board policy revision. Resolved, the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approve the revisions to policy number 7130, entitlement to attend, age and residency. Motion, please?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Again, as assured in backup notes, these are required by law, the changes in...
Go ahead, tell everything. That's why, that's why I texted. There wasn't the explanation in backup notes.
Okay, I'm here. I just sent it to the committee. So these are the changes in law with regard to registration. So it talks about if somebody were to show up at your doorstep, you have 24 hours to register them in your school district, as you then explore if they're actually a resident, if they're undocumented, or if it's case making. So it's just the changes of law that's required by every school district in state and New York.
Thank you. Any other questions? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. That motion carried. New business number four, approval of merged team. Resolved, the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the Shared Services Committee, approved the merged football program with Leroy Central School District. Upon Section 5 approval, the board authorizes the superintendent to fix his signature to a three-year contract. Motion, please?
I'll make it.
And a second?
Yep.
Discussion? Questions?
I'll just say, I said on the committee, Bob and Leroy's committee is extremely thorough and looking to have a very successful program going forward, so everybody can be happy with the decision.
Committee, Jamie, Mrs. Dell, and our English, the Shared Services.
Thank you.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. That motion carried. We are now into executive session. Resolved, the Board of Education adjourned to executive session at 6:39 PM to discuss the employment and employee history of particular persons and confidential student records protected by FERPA. Motion, please?
I'll make it.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. That motion carried. We will be back. Resolved, the Board of Education returned to regular session at 8:20, 8:36 PM.
7:36.
Thank you, 7:36.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, and a second?
Sure.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Our final item this evening is personnel. We have one item under personnel, approval of a school-to-work student. Motion, please?
I'll make it.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. That motion carried. Resolved, the Board of Education adjourned the meeting of February 27, 2024 at 7:37 PM. Motion, please?
I'll make it.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Everybody have a good evening.